Well, not really. We were thinking about converting that raw water line to a finished water pipe. I said, "Well, I'm gonna think if I had two new lines, one heading south from the plant, the other heading north from the plant, coming down 98." Um, let's see. You had, that was the original concept. The yellow would head it south and come down steps or how you get it down there for a wall. At the corner of it. But that was the original pipe. And I brought that up and we looked at the pipe and the pipe is a very thick wall ductile iron pipe. The ductile iron pipe is much thinner today than it was back then. Engineering thing. Engineers are pretty conservative a lot. That was in the early stages of just switching from the old cast irons to ductile iron pipe. And so the wall thickness is worse than that. It's cast iron. Even though it's much better metallurgically, ductile iron pipe is much stronger. Much more stronger, much durable, cement lining, oh, so it's all good stuff. And I checked and it was all pressure tested at 150 PSI, as I recall, 100 to 150 PSI. Well, that's, and it was meant to carry that type of pressure. As a raw water line, it had 30, 40 PSI max on it, much, much smaller. Well, it's just gravity from halfway reservoir at the plant, so it just didn't have that kind of crack. But still, the pipe was built for that. Now, the only problem is, over the years, nobody's maintained it and it's all grown, most of it's woods. The first, the first section coming from the plant halfway to US 30, that's a field. Beyond that, you're in the mountain woods. Oh, it's a nice walk, you ought to do it.
That's right next to the river, for the most part.
For the most part, it is paralleling river. You can hear the river as you walk by. Now, along with, if we were to go that way, if you were to do that, if you see these two, there's two, two, um, bull marks there on each side of US 30, there's two, one on each side of the railroad tracks that you can see, and there's one more set right there beside the water pipe. Each of those dots are interconnection between the newer 24-inch and the old 18-inch. There's an old, the original pipe coming from the original two reservoirs, they use that 18-inch pipe. That's not the pipe. Anyway, that's old cast iron stuff. But they had the interconnect, interconnection, so they could use both pipes, isolate segments and everything else. To make the conversion, you'd have to get at all of these points. One on each side of 30, one on each side of railroad track, all by the lagoon, and then on the east side of the track by the old water pipe. And you have to eliminate those connections. So they're gonna have to go in there, tear up a piece of pipe, remove the connection between the 24 and 18-inch all the way through, but it was totally abandoned at 18-inch. Contractor has to do that. And that's what they did, and that's what they agreed to do. But in order to get there, that becomes an issue. And I guess now Rob found the easements for the pipe. I don't know if that included access to the pipe.
I thought it did, but I wouldn't say for sure. I want to verify.
It's never, it hasn't been exercised for Rob. The distribution crews, they, they, they will actually park along US 30 and hit at the valves on each side of 30. They can go down to the lagoons and get at this section and on each side of the railroad tracks down there. The one on, I'll give the one for a row, on the other side of the railroad by the water pipe? I guess they're gonna carry everything in, but I don't know. But there's no, there's no good access to that place. If the river's really low and you took a track hoe and had the bucket out, they could go under. If they drill on the riverbed, but that's really the only reasonable way to get there. So that becomes an issue. So, and then in the future, to get at the pipe, unless you go through and actually remove all the trees on top of the pipe, which should have been the dinnies back in the 70s, but it never was, that, that is the issue to get through the next. Now, as part of the construction of the new plant, we did have to core, they call it a cookie, we actually cored a piece of the pipe out, of this 24-inch pipe. We did remove it. We've got to make a tie in there to make this connection. The pipe looked as good as it did when it was put in the ground. The exterior was nice and black. Everything looked perfect about that time. Pulled out the kumpad, first that's eight inches in diameter. Look at that, the cement lining's there. Anything we could see inside the pipe up and down was clean. The cement lining had stained brown. It was that had brown stain on it. Which is because the water's been carrying through. It was, you know, basically the river water. Anyway, so that's the only thing that was wrong. And they ran a video line, 300 and some odd feet or something like it, whatever it was. And you really didn't see anything wrong there. I mean, there was some dips in the pipes, but it's a pressured pipe, so it's, it's pretty calm. They could have put it into the trenches for crying out loud. So, you know, that's pretty calm. But that's the issue. If you get, if they get clean, if they get the interconnections removed and put it right, blow off valves and everything, there's still always that issue about the pipes. That pipe being underneath, shoot, they're, they're full mature hardwood trees now. So that's the issue with that. Getting access and the trees. Not mugging on through there or open that up, make a light path out of it or something, it would be 80. But that's a lot. That's 10,000 some feet, so it is. That was a fly at one time, but it never happened. Finding grants for these types of things, you require me to... So, but, so the other, there are alternatives to do that. I mean, if indeed that's not the way to go, obviously we got a big price for that. The other things to do would be to come from the plant and head north. It's only 300, 400 feet from the plant to get to Plymouth Street, 98. And then run the line, just following Plymouth Street all the way into town. That, that's the only alternative. Because going the other way, we got that crap. So, anyway, so that's the big thing.
On the map, though, you see that red X, that's where we can tie in with the... We were first looking at a 12, but if something happened to the 18 that feeds the south, then a 12 wouldn't suffice. So we'd have to look at a 16-inch, go down to a 12, and then we get to the other side. There's the line that runs to the crossroads. So we could actually maybe hook onto that and hit, go straight to the tower. And that would all be just a farm table or whatever. And we already go through part of it. So there should be an easy there for doing that. So it's just another alternative that we could look at and we could maybe spread it out over a couple of years and do it ourselves.
I didn't have any, so Jeff and I need to talk about this beforehand, so I took it home myself. This is a little bit bigger map.
So west of the tracks, what size line is that?
Well, it goes down to, I think, an 8. But then when it goes north to Crossroads, I do believe it's a 12. So just talking to Gary earlier before the meeting, he said that that would, that would bing the town. Even though you go down with an 8 and you go back up to a 12, and then we might give a 16 to the tower. But that would help the north end, and that would help Crossroads if there's any future development here. Because right now, we're repeating everything through the south into town, which, you know, to get to the north tower, we haven't got any problem with any kind of pressure or anything, but if someone would move into Crossroads, I'm sure they'll want a certain PSI at their boat.
So anyway, one way to do it, I mean, Jeff was talking about running a 12 inch and all that. The way to get the full plant capacity, so you'd have a fully redone the line. If, if the one that's installed now, the 18-inch heading south on Beach Grove, if that were to break. Right now, you're gonna live with the water in the tanks, assuming you don't run it off the pipe that's broken. And you're done. So that's it. But this gives you, to do the full redundancy, you're talking about starting at the plant. And now I ran a 24-inch, it takes at least a 16-inch. And then you run the 16-inch all the way, probably could connect here with the 12-inch, but then you have to run the 16-inch on in the tower. You, you need to get into some better pipes. Unfortunately, the first pipes you run into in there are all 6-inch pipes. So that doesn't cut. I mean, you need a 16-inch. And I have no clue how many 6-inch pipes it takes to make a, 6-inch pipe to make a 16. Two, four, six or seven, something like that. It takes a lot of 6-inch pipe to equal the same carrying capacity as 16. That's why we're continuing on into the town a little bit further. We're coming down in, down 98 and just down Plymouth Street. And then that's the yellow line, and then I got a blue line there with a 12. And then ultimately, that's connecting to a 12-inch pipe. There's the bottom end of that, the lower left. Those are, those are existing, there's an existing stretch of 12-inch pipe. And, and I, to be honest, I don't know if somebody had a plan to run more 12-inch pipe or something. Ultimately, long-term, if you something, run it up to the elevated gate there, I don't, I, I don't know what the pass was. But in order to do it, you need a 16-inch pipe. That gives you the full redundancy of that. How exactly you can get into town, I mean, I actually, another way to do it is just come down the tracks and tie into the old pipe, the old, down by the old plant. That's another alternative, boy. That would be the full redundancy. But it's also gonna cost more, markedly more.
You know, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, we've been wanting to try to help those people that own all that property out there. You know, east of the railroad tracks and for the future development. That might be the best alternative for us is see if we can find money from maybe reordering the claim and our economic development person with the county.
Gary?
Gary. I mean, development-wise, that might be just the cats meow there running down Plymouth Street, down Route 98.
Bruce, when you talk about, where are you, where do you mean when you say east?
Well, I'm saying from north of the water treatment plant, running right down Route 98 west.
Got it.
And you're, you're picking up all that, all that area that there's no water. And there's, you know, there's property sitting out there that's doing nothing. And then we've been approached a number of times by that business person that, you know, he's been wanting water for, at sewer, or starts higher than he'll move all that from.
Yeah, we had talked to him about the sewer and what he had to do to put it in, and then we did talk to him about the water. But I think the way he, when we talked to him the last time, it was, he liked to put in, but he wasn't gonna tap it right now. He wanted it there to stop. But if we did that way, it would be the...
It would be, you know, for economically.
Right. Like I said, it could be something we could put in ourselves. It just would take longer because, you know, we're not gonna be able to dedicate just, that's all we're gonna do in that department, the four people, so.
If we looked at the numbers as to how much the difference would be to do the two things that needed to be done with the red line here to take that one that we currently have, get it ready as opposed to doing a whole brand-new one. I mean, it seems if it's, if it's cheaper to fix up what we already have, why would we spend the extra money? That much extra money to do a whole new line? I realize that, I mean, you said today, you were talking about that that was something you felt that the city could take on themselves and do it over a period of time. That wouldn't be something that would be done in six months or eight months, but would be maybe a project that'd take at least a year.
Oh, I'd say at least.
At least a year, yeah.
There, there is a, a part C that I talked to Lynn Keever about our OPWC funding for next year. And would it be possible to, since this is a raw water line, and typically you can qualify being based off that you're replacing the line. So technically, we are. So there might be some funding there that whether we get a grant or we could take our OPWC share next year, it may maybe be a half of it upfront, we wouldn't have to borrow the money. Or we could look at the money we have in the Water Works Replacement Fund that I talked to Joyce about. You know, we could eventually maybe fund that somehow. But Lynn was gonna give the Donna Kirk right from OPWC just to see how we would qualify, if that would qualify for a project, since we're replacing a raw water. So that's kind of a little different situation than a water line on Woods Lawn or anywhere like that.
And that 400 feet, they qualify to help for water line expansion. You have to run the water line to Route 98 if you ever wanna go north or go east or whatever way you wanna go with the future water line. You know, that would be, that would be your investment, the city's investment.
And then that's...
I'm gonna replay again.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't even...
Go ahead.
Um, but I, I asked, I told Gary that, I asked Lynn to come to the next meeting to find out what he finds out in Donna, because then we also wanna talk about Stepsor and Sulphur and the money we have based off what we do with this project and how we take this water line and how we spend that money that we got some money sitting there now that we could put towards Stepsor and Sulphur Springs, and he's checking on that, seeing how it's two different townships. We might be able to get a grant there. No, definitely it's zero percent money's gonna be available, but I, I, I'm trying to stay away from the market with the money.
What is your confidence in the current line, the raw water line? That puts you right on that.
If I didn't think it worked, I never would have, would have followed through.
I have a question, Bruce.
Yeah, right. I think it's fine, it's just, it's just if your access is...
Yeah.
Oh, when you're drawing here on this bigger map, you showed us you got the 16-inch line coming down 98 from the new water plant to the railroad tracks, and then you actually have another drawing where you could pull this line down to the old draw, 24-inch line. Is that another option that we can, or is that just kind of just drawing thinking or...
Which map are you looking?
I'm looking at this right here. You got the...
He's looking at this line right there.
So you're going from there down to...
Right down to the raw water.
I think this guy's... It's just short. We're about five feet short of this pipe. It's already installed. So we, we did this and this as part of the water plant project. This is installed across the railroad tracks, tied into that 8-inch, and it is full.
Okay.
So this is all in place.
How hard would it be, I guess, I mean, I did all these trees and everything that you're running into, making it, you know, harder to get to that raw water line. Would it be, I guess, how difficult is it to get to that section of raw water and tie into that?
Yeah, you'd be cutting it better in half, half the distance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, along the railroad tracks is easy.
Okay.
Because they literally, that's how they get to the lagoon.
Okay.
Just off of 90 inches, railroad tracks and all the way to railroad tracks or... There must be an agreement with, with, with the railroad to do that.
I thought if you did, I would present something.
And you're using it for years.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But yes, so getting, hitting along there is not the problem. The real problem is getting, getting here.
Right.
This, this is the difficult one. Unless, or that would like you to go off, off, off the interstate line, they're already go through the fence to get out.
The only reason why I see that the, the existing raw water line to me is, oh, make it happen and still use this is because, well, that's part of our opportunities, I mean.
True.
So, you know, you're talking about future development in those areas and people investing money. So, I mean, that's another thought to take into consideration there, too. I do love the idea of coming down 98, 'cause I agree with Bruce that it makes it easier for us to, you know, expand out further with our water system. And I mean, as far as getting out of all those tree issues and everything, I mean, I would say monetarily wise, it's probably gonna be the cheaper option because it's just trying to get through them trees and dealing with digging them up or getting them out of the way to get to the raw water line, but...
Yeah, what would that cost to do all those trees?
Right, that's what I'm saying. So coming down 98's gotta be cheaper than going through all the trees to get to the existing raw water line, but I just, I hate to lose that section from basically east of Route 30 because that's right in our opportunity zone right there. And I hate to not have a water line out there.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. The tree across the street that was a mature maple tree that we took out, and they got the stump out, it was 1,500 bucks, so... I don't know how many mature trees there are. If you have, if you have 100 mature trees, probably 150, probably more than that. That doesn't include the small ones with the brush. So it probably, you know, I'm...
I don't know if you'd log, that's what you're using for timber.
That's right. I was just kinda suggesting, we could sell...
Sure, I know, they are.
The stumps are gonna be... Vince?
Go ahead. So Jeff, was the original plan to use the old water, raw water line?
Yes, this started way back when, 2010, 11, or 12, whenever it started. It was to use it, but as, as we put it out the bed and we sat in the pre-con meeting, I could just, it scared me. And I wanted you guys to be aware of what we could run into coming through the woods to Grandma's house, as I said. You know, then we would actually, what happens if we get a leak right there and we haven't cleared that out? Then, yeah, we still have to redone the line, the 18 coming in Beach Grove, and we're fine. But just getting to it and then fixing it and making a pact to get back there so it isn't open. I, I just thought the expense, you know, maybe it weren't to look at coming up 98 to go east and west.
So that area that the raw water line runs along, I mean, it, it comes right from the, you know, wall, water tree of the plant, it runs through this woods to the new. I mean, we've been talking about bike paths. Is there any possibility of this, you know, being combined as a bike path grant, ODNR, and, you know, using some kind of creative process to get an ODNR grant to clear that ground in the process of clearing for a bike path from the old to the new?
Mr. The...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, we applied for a grant, a second grant there, a $500,000 grant. You know, it would take us, you know, we would have to get the grant, they're competitive. It would probably take us, you know, five or 10 years, let's say, by the use of grants. What might be a better way to do that is if that's the way council decides to go, is to, you know, get the cost of it and just have, have some kind of a capital campaign in the city. And raise the money that way.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, I mean, I don't know how much it's gonna cost. What, what kind of, do you have any kind of a ballpark idea of what we're talking about in terms of cost of clearing and using the existing versus taking the alternate route down 98? Kind of taking the clearer path?
The only cost we have right now is to clean the line and put the butterfly valves in. And they have to clear out their spots to do that.
And then we've got those spots.
Yeah.
That's not much.
And that, that's roughly 184,500 dollars. But that is nothing but...
But that's not including clearing the path.
Nothing, yeah.
Or any repairs if, if anything goes wrong. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Doesn't that have to be pressure tested again?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Not the cord, if you're not worried.
Yeah, the, the chlorinated cleaning and...
They need to, they're coordinated, but yeah, right.
It has to be done.
Okay, I got those, then I got Mark. Go ahead, though.
If we don't use the raw water line currently right now, is it still able to be possibly in, say, five or 10 years, they will be tapped into and used to get hit a later time?
No reason not to. Cap today, it'll close, or a valve down by the water plant, but this valve that's closed. It's not going anywhere.
All right. How much would it cost? I mean, what is the, today's price for that 24-inch line? If we ran, and it would cost significantly more for us to run a 24-inch line than we already have, correct? I mean, a lot more than that 16-inch line you got going down 98.
But the 16...
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we got almost...
Yeah, the 24-inch.
We got quite a bit of difference. I mean, that's a lot of pipe there. Eight inch more pipe can haul a lot more water and, and it's already there. I mean, how much is it gonna cost ballpark to run that line down 98? The 16-inch line that's on the plant? Give or, I'm not holding it, this is a ballpark.
A ballpark? If we put it in, you're probably...
Put me in the space.
Seven fifty to a million.
Okay, and we're talking...
That's if we're gonna run it so we can feed that tower.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, this line that's already here, we're talking, you said 180,000?
Yeah, 185,000.
Okay, that's just to get those spots over. So we're talking maybe another half a million, just a guess. And we only got the line there. I mean, if we're saying a million dollars...
Like I said.
We're, we're a half a million, we're saving a half a million dollars by clearing that. And that's just a guess. I have no idea. Still, it's already there. And I hate to see us put a whole nother line in that. And that's just an idea. I don't know, right? We'd have to get prices and costs and...
Well, that's why we're here tonight, 'cause I wanted you guys to be aware of all the different avenues that we could look at.
But also...
Give us the guidance, which way to go, Mr. Chairman.
Fair question.
The water line, we have easement, right? But that is all private property, correct? That is not public owned, that's not government-owned property as in, this industrial river is not government-owned or doesn't have a right-of-way for it. Am I correct?
No, but what, as far as I know, there's already easements in place for all of it.
Right, but I mean, it, we're, it's still, we... Yeah, I'm just saying, it's still going through private property. And to put a bike path in, it's a whole different ballgame for private property to get easement rights other than to access. Am I right or wrong?
It's all owned by one property owner, though.
Yeah, and Rich has already said he...
Richard Kirby, right?
Yeah, Richard.
But I, I'm just, but I'm just saying. It's a, just an idea. I don't, I'm, I think it's feasible, it would be, in my opinion, more feasible once we get figures. We gotta get actual figures to get that, than to put another line in. That's my idea.
Go ahead, Kurt.
If the woods was to be cleared, how wide of a path of a clearing would you need going through that woods?
Not to get a vehicle through, like 20 feet?
More than likely, the easement probably has a 20-foot permanent easement and a 40, 50-foot construction easement. They're gonna be limited to at least probably 20 foot maximum. You can't, you wouldn't be able to go beyond the permanent easement. From a practical standpoint, if you're really right beside the, the pipe or whatever, they, they need a, you need a large enough path to be able to drive a backhoe and a small dump truck down it. I mean, to be honest. So you're, 10 foot, 10 foot of pavement would be bare minimum, whether it's just gravel or, or asphalt. As long as you have a couple of foot on each side for your mirrors and everything.
Clearing the woods is a much different process than calling your local tree trimmer and saying, "Hey, I got a big walnut out in my front yard I'd like to have taken down. And is there any possibility we could possibly get a quote on clearing that woods?" So we got better numbers here to work with?
Two point.
Why don't they get a quote then?
It's about two miles, a mile and a half. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Has Clayton this line been bid and accepted and all that?
Yeah, we actually asked him...
Yeah, we actually asked him for a little more time to make a decision on it and he was fine. Cause he was the one when we met, he was worried about numerous issues. So he was fine that we didn't start right away. So he would be okay to come back and follow and do it. So.
Right. So for 184,500, you're saying, thing is like.
He cleaned the line and put the valves in. That is required by the bid.
I don't know.
Go ahead, Barry.
That's what he's going to do. Yeah, it, the line might break 10 years down the road or whatever, but I understand that. But.
Mr. Chairman, Gary, question for you. Now, we've talked about, is the, is the concept of a redundant line, is that, would you say it's 100% used throughout the state? Do most entities our size have a redundant line or they just have one line?
Anywhere where you're seeing a water plant distant, just distant from the town proper, I don't know of a single one that doesn't have two lines leading the plant to get to the tower. It's that simple. Sometimes if you're right in town proper and you only have to go a single pipe from, from the plant, 40, 50, 80 feet or something, yeah, lots of eyes see that in a smaller village. Anybody of any size, bad too?
Just, one, one other question here, just to make sure that I understand that this blue, on your map, this blue line that turns down and sort of does that little jiggy-jiggy thing, is this already existing?
That is all.
That is already existing. Okay. So because we do have water to the east of the railroad tracks.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that is, there is water that's already in there. And then this one that, that's going north and the tower is right here, correct? And I think this is, is this all carpet or property up here too, isn't it?
I'm not sure.
I know this part here is.
I would assume so.
That's the shadow of the tower right there. Okay.
I said, I would assume so.
Yeah.
Where he lives.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Cause they've got that woods back behind where he and Jimbo live. And, okay. So that's already installed, that piece. So it wouldn't take much to get from here over to the tower. But we don't really need to go directly to the tower. We can feed it into lines that are currently there to get to the tower.
But they're all six inch.
They're all six inch.
On the street, except it's either winged or maple as a 12 inch.
Yeah, there's this one 12 inch right here.
That goes through the tower.
Yeah.
You made the statement, all that to the west of that murder tracks is inadequate. Cause they have six inch lines.
That's an improvement over what you have, but it's not, it's not the full redundancy that we're talking about.
I just have a question for you, kind of on this, on these two options. It seems kind of like you're kind of leaning toward a new line running down 98 because it kind of keep, because it keeps us out of the wood, literally out of the woods. And we aren't going to be trying to clear, you know, big trees in the event that a pipe breaks, mill the woods somewhere and we can't get it. And we have long-term bigger problem with access. And then we, I think, also have to constantly keep that path cleared, which is a lot of maintenance and upkeep. I mean, maybe I'm reading you wrong, but I, is that with, would you agree with that? Is that your kind of position on the one line option versus the other?
I'm supposed to be totally unbiased.
I mean, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the engineers. What's the engineer's mentality here?
The mentality is you have pipes far older than 40 years in your system. And most of them probably give you no problems or they beyond the slate to be replaced. It's not uncommon to have cast iron pipe in the ground over 100 years. It is not uncommon at all. And duckling your pipe is far superior to the cast iron. Nothing wrong with that. Not a thing.
Okay.
Cause it's just a lot less expensive.
Who has logging rights to that path to, is it, is the carpenter, Mr. Carpenter, if we were to log that out, is he entitled to any of the trees that are worth money?
Sorry, I think we got to look at easement, Kurt. Um, what was it when, when it was broke back in the seventies?
Torque that is being a maintenance item, which I can certainly sign and seal anything that says for the maintenance of that pipe, the tree should be removed.
So.
That was.
Go ahead.
The, the price of the trees of it that we have, a little over a thousand or 1,500 dollars, that's with them keeping the wood. So, I mean, it's, it's still going to cost you. I mean, with a large quantity of trees, we might get a better deal. But it's, you're looking at, you know, trampits and big trees as well as you, the bush hog and that, having put stone down, you know. So it's, but they're not going to have to, pardon me, I'm not, they don't have to worry about removing the stump or the stumper. They can pull those out.
Pull those a big stump? I don't think so.
And how they clear these woods for, when they put 30 in, they, they didn't stop. They just went right through and did it. But.
That's what I was, that's what I was going to say. I mean, ultimately, I, I understand what you're, you're saying there. But, I mean, if you're talking one tree in a residential area compared to a, a bunch of trees in a far superior rural area, I imagine that, you know, the care and consideration and where they fall and how they fall is not nearly as much either. So the price probably changes dramatically.
What do you think?
It's hard to say.
Go ahead, Barry.
I think it all, it all depends on the price, what's going to cost one way to the other. I think if we have, this is just my opinion, if we take it for what, what, I think if they've already bid that and we consider, you know, put that line in, let's put that line in. And then if we want to, you know, work on that line in the next five years going down 19 or 98 there, you know, we can do that. Pick up the OPWC grants and things and do a little bit here and a little bit there. So I guess that's my opinion. So anybody.
We would be up to the committee to go ahead and find out how much it's going to cost to clear these trees. Maybe, I don't know, do we have to have a piece of legislation to do that? Or do we have to, I mean, cause you're going to have to almost have a competitive bid to find out how much it costs to, to clear trees and.
Can we give, could we give somebody just to give us, you know, like give us estimates on prepayment and everything?
Or, I mean, is that something that we just use existing city crew to do some of that, that clearing work? And, or is that not, not really?
Well, I, I think we could probably do some of it. It'd be the timeframe of which it's going to get done is the problem.
Yeah.
You know, but if we could, if we could just walk it and look at, okay, hey, we count this many trees that we know we can't handle.
Correct.
Then we could probably allocate some goals.
That'd be good.
But I think another thing will be to find out if I can have Lynn come to the next meeting. They see what he finds out about OPWC and those kinds of things for next year in 2020. And we could compile all that just to get an idea. I don't know if I can get a tree. I might be able to get counted trees by then if we think that we can't handle. And it might take time to clear it out, but over time, we could do sections each year if we choose to stay in that route to use that. And then it would eventually be cleared. This would be done right away.
Right.
I mean, if this line's been around that long and, you know, it just scares me that something happened to it. We got the other line coming to the tap, so. Just get out there in the middle of nowhere to fix something is my concern, so.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I think, give, I think we need to get more information before we really decide anything on this one. So I'm inclined to say, you know, let's re-circle back on this in a few weeks.
Well, that's fine. And that's also, before this gets some input. So I knew which way to keep going. So. And so we can let the contractor know what we're doing. So as far as right now, it's pushed off till fall. It's fine.
Steve, what do you have here?
Uh, yeah, he said he should have his stuff around, but then he'll be able to come on the.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If we can walk that, maybe take some pictures or video and maybe be able to present that in a future meeting. So have a, you know, a more accurate idea what it all looks like. They could kind of adjust that. We could certainly take a video too, so.
I might go ahead and raise that since 6:44.
So there's no need for a finance committee meeting, so we won't have that. Would you like to finish about them first?
It's all you.
I'd like to present a question.
I have one question. I had three people call me and two people at work ask me. We had that downpour yesterday and Walnut, Mansfield and Sandusky here have standing water. One of them asked me, do we have a, a protocol on if we're having a severe thunderstorm morning or forecast that we have somebody in either the street department or police department? And I don't know who, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know how to get to be able to go out and put up, you know, high water signs, just especially if you're Walnut, Sandusky and Mansfield. The one person said he came through Mansfield and luckily he had a big enough truck. He didn't have to worry about it. But he, luckily he knew where to watch out for it and there were people who didn't. And there was no signs of it.
Well, I, I know we had somebody out, but.
I just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that they get the rest down about putting the signs up.
They were questioning why, if we have protocol on that.
What we did, we just bring somebody in to go around and make sure that, that basically you're open and especially where.
We get a call from police department first.
Yeah. How would you, the street department, in general, send somebody out?
Okay. They were asking and I didn't know. I just wanted to ask.
Okay, anymore? Okay. Any motion to adjourn?
Somebody.
Second? In favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.